Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action concerning some counties business slices on. Mr. Watts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started, I want to thank all of these handsome and good-looking people that are here tonight, who are interested in the business of the county. Thank you for your interest, and I would encourage you to continue to monitor and watch what your government is doing at the county level, at the city level, and at the legislative level. What you are being passed out is a copy of the business ordinance language. And what you see highlighted in yellow is the piece that some of us on council have some issue with. And so I'm going to go through that and make a few points. And I know that there are others who want to make comments as well. I also want you to know that it is not my intention to call for a vote tonight. And the reason that I don't plan to call for a vote tonight is because I want to hear from you. And so we're going to have a discussion. And I think my friend, the councilman from Myrtle Beach Highway, or my friend, the council lady from Shiloh, will probably move to carry it over so that you will have an opportunity to speak during public comment period. And then the goal is to come back in two weeks and hopefully, between now and that time, if there are those on council who are not in agreement, hopefully they will get religion between now and then. So if everyone has the document, let me just go directly to the issue I have. If you will note Section 2636, Section C. It says, "The applicant, licensee, prior licensee, or the person in control of the business has been convicted within the previous 10 years of an offense under a law or ordinance regulating business, a crime involving dishonest conduct or moral turpitude related to a business or a subject of a business, or an unlawful sale of merchandise or prohibited goods." That's in Section 2636. If you will flip over to the next page. And this section is under suspension and revocation of license. If you will notice subsection D, it has the same line. So essentially, what that means is that if you apply for a business license and you've had a conviction in the last 10 years, even though you have served your time, you've done probation, you've done parole, and any other activities that you've been required to do, the county can still come and say, "We may deny you a business license." If you already have the license, right? And you still have that conviction, even though you've gone through the process, and the county finds out about it, then they can, of course, revoke your license under the same premise. Now, when you think about that on its face, and you think about what's going on in other parts of the country, for instance, Pennsylvania. And there are some young folks in here who know, Meek Mills, he's a rapper. He got put back in jail because he kicked a wheelie. Technical violation of his probation. And so what Pennsylvania did is they've overhauled their system. They've overhauled it to the point where people who've had convictions, within a four-year period, those convictions are now being expunged, even for low-level drug offenses. And so if Pennsylvania can create a scenario where they say to folks, "You've done your time, you're ready to come back into society, and you even want to open a business, we want to help you. We want you to be an integral part of society." This language is regressive. And it's also discriminatory. And it's discriminatory because people who apply for business licenses, they do not go through a local, state, or national background check. And so the selection of who is chosen, right, to be looked at, it's not even random. When I say random, it's not the fifth person, the 10th person, the 75th person. It's who's chosen. And so without a comprehensive system in place where everyone has to go through the same process, then people are not getting due process. And we're all about due process. So a lot has been said about the city and the county never denying anyone. And ladies and gentlemen, and my colleagues, this language, some form of this language, has been in effect since 1989. It was revised in 1921, which is what you have, it was signed in '21 and went into effect in '22. But this is the language. And so when people say, "Well, nobody's ever been denied, so we should leave it in there." Well, there's a reason that nobody's been denied. When you go apply for a business license, and I have one in front of me, there is nothing on this business license that asks you if you're a convicted felon. There's nothing on here that asks you, "Have you served time?" There are none of those questions on here. No question about background check or any of that. Seems pretty simplistic, right? So what folks are not telling you is that before you even get to fill out the business license application, you have to fill out what's called a commercial business clearance form. And on the clearance form, there is a question that says, "Have you ever been convicted of a crime?" And so if you do not pass the commercial business clearance form, you never get to fill out a business application. And that is why there's never been a denial. Because you don't ever get to fill it out if you don't get past this. Again, the name on this, Commercial Business Clearance Form. The business application says, "Application for professional license." Folks, this is not right. And what I would like to see happen, I would like to see Section C stricken on the first part and Section D stricken on the second part. Now, there are other parts of the section that still give authorities the opportunity to address this issue if they so choose to. But to have a system in place where everyone is not treated the same, again, is not due process. Now, I've been told that all applicants do not go through the law enforcement system. They're sent over. Some are checked out, some are not checked out. And I know that are checked out, there is no national search. So if I'm in Tennessee and I move to Sumter and we run a state check, it's not going to show up what happens in Tennessee. So this whole notion about providing protection is just an illusion. I will also tell you that I have talked to several individuals who've been incarcerated, have come out and have very successful businesses. One of them, one of my favorites, is Juan Love. He's one of my constituents in my district. Juan, would you stand up for a second? Thank you. I want you to see him. Thank you, Juan. Juan runs our Rembert's Farmers Market. And do you know that during COVID, this man was open every day? He was an essential worker. For those of you who know about Rembert, Rembert is a food desert. There were many seniors who could not and did not get out. Not only did this man show up at the farmer's market every day, but if a senior called him and said, "I need squash, peas, watermelon," they didn't even have to come and get it. He would take it to them. I see Ms. Mara Wright back there. Mara, am I accurate?
Correct.
And so when we are creating these kinds of ordinances, and it really blew me away when I read it and when I did the background and found out that this kind of language had been in existence since 1989. I don't even know who was representing District 1 in 1989. I have no idea. Of course, that's '24, '11, 36 years ago. But that's how long this language has been around. We cannot, we cannot call ourselves Team Sumter and use this kind of aggressive language regarding a certain part of our citizenry. And so my goal is going to be to remove this language in both sections. Now, there are a couple of other technical things that I walk up into at the moment. But I'm going to stop here and yield to some of my colleagues who I'm sure may have something to say. But I wanted you to understand why I took this on as an issue. Because it affects my constituents, and it affects people who look like me. Now, the word "may," and my good friend from Myrtle Beach Highway will talk about this, but when something is being done that doesn't apply to everyone, it's a problem. And so I'm asking this council to address it. Now, we're not going to call for a vote tonight because we want to hear from you. But in two weeks, when we come back, I will call for a vote. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield, but I may come back again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time. Before I go, I'd like to yield to my lady, council lady there. I'm a gentleman, so.
Thank you. We've had a discussion before now, and so everybody pretty much knows my sentiment about this. And I don't have to say a lot because my colleague and councilman from Rembert has covered it very eloquently, and he knows what he's talking about. And my expression in committee was that I'm not a hypocrite when it comes to love. And to me, this will take love for your fellow man to really see what the current wording could potentially do to people who have been incarcerated. And I know some people today whose only opportunity at success would be to be an entrepreneur. That means having her own business because they are past felon or they even committed some misdemeanor. And so I don't think that we are in a rush to take a look at this ordinance and just to take time and do the right thing. That's just the bottom line. And the basic thing that we need to consider is love. Love for our fellow man and the wish for everyone to be successful. And I do thank you, councilman, for studying it. We are just blessed to have your depth of knowledge in your everyday life and what you do, where you come across these issues and already have something to take it on to. And so we are blessed to have that. It saves me some study time. And I would just like my, all the council members indulgence to allow us this opportunity without being contentious, but just see in the heart of this and just do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm going to take this opportunity to share a few things. And I want to stand when I do this because I'm not from here, which people have told me many times, that you must not be from here. Well, I came here as born, raised, and gnawed. I came here by way of apples in 1970. I got here and I asked one of the colleagues that was on the base. I said, "Can you give me directions to the black community?" Because I wanted to go see it. And he told me how to get there, how to get on Main Street. And he said, "Go over the bridge." So I went over the bridge. And when I went over that bridge on Main Street, I thought I was thrown back 20 years in time. I saw something. I saw discrimination. I saw racism. So I have a lot of background in that because I've worked as a drug and alcohol counselor over 30 years. I was executive director of the Drug and Alcohol Commission here in Sumter, which is now Behavioral Health Services. I'm also a licensed social worker over 30 years. So when we talk about, "Does it affect black people?", yes, it does. These laws affect people who look like me. And I'm concerned because I want to see everyone has an equal opportunity because we have a high poverty rate in Sumter, 20%. And poverty is caused by inequality. Inequality is the reason we have poverty. People are not treated equal. So when I begin to look at these laws, and I begin to see who is it being affected? Because in my position with the Drug and Alcohol Commission, most of our crimes were African-American. Matter of fact, 75% of the people we dealt with in Sumter County were African-American. And it's not because they committed more crime than other people. They were just processed more than other people. See, people like to tell you, "Oh, white people don't smoke pot. White kids don't smoke pot." And I remember someone saying, "White kids at Wilson Hall don't smoke pot." Well, I found out different. Because my son was very popular, and he began to have a good association with a white young girl who went to Wilson Hall. And she kind of told him, "Chris, we smoke more pot than you do." So I know the system is not fair. So that's what I want us to do, is be able to look at how this is going to impact on African-Americans. Now, I'm going to give you a perfect example, then I'm going to shut up. We have a law in here that says if you are not given a license or whatever, you can appeal. You may appeal this application. Who are you going to appeal it to? You see, who are you going to appeal it to? But that word "may," that word "may" is the most dangerous thing that have ever happened to Sumter, South Carolina. That word "may." Because that word "may" is used to deny low-income people in public education, mostly black people of quality education. Because that word "may" is used by members on this council to deny the schools their annual village requests, which they are entitled to by law, in the South Carolina Act 308. So they're denied. There have been $10 million that this school district have not gotten because this council, members on this council, use that word in the title, Act 308, that says, "Council may give them the money." You see what I mean? And that's what we're dealing with. So as a result, look at the education system. Look at reading and math. Matter of fact, this is my last statement. I represent Myrtle Beach Highway. And you know, right off Myrtle Beach Highway is a school called R.E. Davis. And they consolidated R.E. Davis with Maywood. And they took those kids. Now, Maywood was one of the best middle schools in the district. They closed, and they jammed those kids in with R.E. Davis. But you know what? I'm going to tell you how they fooled you. We're going to give it this fancy name. We're going to call it R.E. Davis College Preparatory Academy. Doesn't that sound good? College Preparatory Academy was saying, "Hey, this is going to be a role model standard for education in Sumter School District." Guess what? R.E. Davis Preparatory Academy is a failing school.
Yes, it is.
It's unsatisfactory. That's what we're dealing with when we talk about education and equal opportunities. So I want you to remember that. And we are doing it this way tonight because we have taught, and we want to hear from you. We want to give you the opportunity for any action that's taken to stand at that podium and share your feelings about this drive, about this license, this business license. So open up, share, and don't let it bother you. Because I've heard so many times when I talk, people tell me, "Oh, you must not be from here." No, I'm not from here. But I believe in equal opportunity and treatment for everyone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? I do want to introduce the council. Now, I guess it's about 10 pages here. This is a petition that's been signed by at least 600 Sumter County residents supporting the removal of the language that they find offensive. 600 people. And I think that number is continuing to increase. My folks are saying that number will continue to increase. But at this point, we're at 600 signatures in a matter of about a week. And so what that suggests to me is that this issue is deeply rooted and important to a lot of people. And I think it's important for government to have a good relationship with this citizenry. As you know, government was established to provide basic services to people. And since I've been on council, I've tried to focus us on that. I'm hoping that we're making some progress in that area. We have made some progress with litter. We need to do more. Roads, we need to do more. Education, we need to do more. Water, we need to do more. But I hope this small sampling of 600 folks enrolling will suggest to all of us up here, me included, that folks are ready for us to dig in and address basic services. And one of the things that we can do to help jumpstart that is remove any aggressive, regressive, discriminatory language from any business ordinance that may exist in Sumter County. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my comments.
Mr. Watts, you and I had a conversation perhaps in the beginning. And I told you that I agreed that we need to make everything equal and that we will continue to take a look at it. Is that correct?
Yes. We had that conversation right before this meeting.
I just want to point out a couple of things because I too did a lot of research on the business licenses. The intent, in my opinion, was not to deny anyone a business license, but to protect our citizenry. And I'll give you some statistics. When you talk about moral turpitude, the Attorney General's Office has some definitions or some categories that moral turpitude offenses fall under. And it's not anywhere near complete, but it includes counterfeiting, forgery, embezzlement, extortion, blackmail, false pretenses, swindle, confidence, game, credit card, automatic tele-fraud, impersonation, welfare fraud, identity theft, hacking, and computer invasion. Just a few examples. Then I went to Sledge Database and asked that to give me some victimology of the categories of people that fall under those crimes. People 65 and over, 55 and over, are most likely to be victims of those types of crimes. Women are more likely than men to be victims of these crimes. Women are also more likely to be the victims of crimes generally. Now, make racial makeup of the victims of these types of crimes is pretty evenly split between black and white. But my point is, the intent of the language was not to deny, though I will admit, Mr. Washington, as you so eloquently stated, that the unintended consequences may be that, but the intent was to protect our people. I'll give you an example of just one. And also, those citizens who have been convicted, it says, "May deny." But it says, "May deny if you've been convicted in the type of business that you're trying to open." Somebody that has gotten arrested for drugs is not going to be denied a business license for opening a barber shop or any other business such as that. But someone that has been convicted of child molestation, crimes, children, do we want them open a business? So again, the intent is to, is to protect those people. I've got a bunch of other, you know, I've got a whole bunch of stuff. It really doesn't matter because it's already out there. It doesn't matter. Well, people don't want it. The word, anyway. No, I'm just saying, there's, there's no need to be going through this stuff because you already demonstrated that. And I'm willing to listen and work with you. That being said, any other comments?